To order, we have an information meeting primarily. We have one action item for the subcommittee, which is the approval of the minutes of the February 6, 2012 meeting.
Will be.
So I'll second it. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. We get to the information section. Before we do that, I'd like to do a little housekeeping. As a rookie chairman of the subcommittee, I have probably am on the verge of exhausting the time and the patience of the trustees. I wanted us to get our arms around the audit process. I believe we're getting that done. I wanted to get our arms around just the way things are working, because I think the function of an audit subcommittee is very important. Going forward, I'll be talking to individual members of the committee, but I would just like you to think about how often it is actually necessary thus to meet as a full committee, because I don't want to impose on staff time, administrative time, and trustee time to a degree that is unnecessary. So we'll talk about that, but I did want to put that out there for people to think about. We have our auditors with us today, which is never a phrase I thought that I would look forward to saying. Happy to say it. I must say, it's still not a phrase that I particularly rolls off my tongue, but we're very pleased to have our colleagues from KPMG. And there are a couple of information items they're going to present, one of which is of particular importance, which is obviously the A-133 audit, and another is the internal control report, and finally, a discussion of key issues for this committee to be aware of and to be thinking about. And with that, I would like to turn it over to our relationship partner from KPMG, Shelley Massey.
Thank you. Okay. I think there were four documents that everyone received electronically. Our presentation, the A-133 draft report, and the management letter, and the one-pager or two-pager top 10 from the Audit Committee Institute. Do we have all those documents? Okay. All right. Great. Fantastic. Well, I'm going to start going through the presentation. And on page one, it includes the agenda. So we are going to be speaking about the management letter. We did issue this, I think, last week in its final form, and that's what was provided to you in the mailing. And then review the A-133 report. That's the report on the university's federal awards. That is in draft form. We do plan to issue after this meeting. And we can review the reported findings in that report. And then lastly, we'll touch upon the Audit Committee Institute document that I had forwarded along in the mailing as well. All right, so moving on to page two. Just a little background. When we determine our audit approach, we and management go through a process of determining which schools we're going to be looking at in terms of the financial statement, internal control test work. There are nine schools that we visited this year. What we have done in the past is determined a rotation methodology, that we visit all the schools at least once in a three-year period, and then the other schools are selected based on changes in management, recommendations from CUNY Central Management, or if there were a lot of previous year comments, management, CUNY management may want us to revisit it that next year to see if they had improved. But the nine schools that we visited this year are here included on page two, and there were four that were up for rotation, so they hadn't been visited in the last three years. Brooklyn, the College of Staten Island, Postos, and LaGuardia. The other five were selected based on certain changes and CUNY Central Management recommendations. But the management letter that we have issued contains comments for central management, most of which we covered and spoke a little bit about in the November meeting. And they do include management responses to each of those comments. And then each of the 19 schools has their own section where we include comments from either the current year, and we do maintain the information from the prior year as well if they weren't visited. We want to see how they were implemented, resolved, updated, so we do get an updated management response for that. I'm going to turn it over to Erin to talk a little bit about slide three, which is our focus areas when we're visiting the schools.
Thanks, Shelley. So there's five main areas of operation that we review at each of the schools, and I'm just going to briefly go over each one and give you an idea of some of the controls that we test while looking at each area. The first is tuition management, which includes the registration, billing, and collection of tuition and fees revenue. We select a sample of students, and one of the main controls that we do is we look at their student information systems, make sure that the information in the system is correct for the student, as well as looking at their billing to make sure they're billed the appropriate amounts based on the tuition rates for the given year. And while also looking at tuition management, we look at the cash receipts process and the reconciliation process of the cash, as well as the recording of the cash on a monthly basis. We look at cash management, and this includes the budgeting of revenues and expenses for each of the colleges, as well as the cash collection procedures and preparing of bank reconciliations. During this process, we look at the review and approval of cash reconciliations for each school. We also look at a list of authorized signatories for each school to make sure that it's updated and it's current for each school. We look at procurement and property management, which includes the procurement, purchasing of capital assets as well as non-capital assets. We look at the tagging and disposals, the inventory process over these assets, as well as general cash disbursement processes. Some of the controls that we look at in this area are the review and approval process over requisitions, POs, invoices, receiving reports. We also look at bidding to ensure that the colleges are following the proper bidding policies at the university. And we also look at, if it's an inventory item, we look at the tagging process to make sure that it's tagged timely and it's properly in the inventory system. The next is information technology, where we look at various, the various programs that the college has, and we look at the access to those programs, as well as any interfaces between the programs at the college. And then there's human resources, and this is the approval of new hires and terms at the colleges. We look at one new hire and one term at each school. We look at their personal action forms to make sure that the salaries that were approved by the schools are actually the salaries that they put into the system and what the person is being paid. And for terminations, we make sure that they're taken off the system timely, both access to any systems that they have, as well as making sure they weren't paid after their termination date. We also look at timesheets and make sure that they're reviewed and approved on a timely basis.
On the next slide, we have the observations that are for the overall Office of University of Controller. So these areas and items noted are identified during our central audit, which occurs at Central in the months of September and October. And I think we did touch upon these in the November meeting, but the first is the CUNY First Implementation issues that we had noted for Queens and Queensborough, and the fact that we could not reconcile the individual detailed data back to the general ledger for those two schools. And we had recommended that a reconciliation process be put in place to reconcile the individual data to the general ledger on a monthly basis. And the importance of this is that there were only two schools that had gone through the implementation of the student account module, and as the remaining schools go onboard, if reconciliations are not maintained, this could be more of a material issue than it was for the fiscal 2011 audit. The next item relates to certificate programs. The college, CUNY management had noted that there were five colleges who did not have all of the programs included on their program participation agreement the last time it was reviewed and approved by the U.S. Department of Education. So as a result, over the last few years, there were some students at these five schools who were receiving student financial assistance, who were involved and enrolled in these programs that were not included on the program participation agreement. So what that means is that they were not considered eligible programs and should not have been receiving aid. I know currently, the CUNY management has sent in the five updated program participation agreements to the U.S. Department of Education for its review and approval. I know that the U.S. Department of Education has commented that they will be approving them, but right now, they're just pending approval. So in the future, we are recommending that the college management review the list of programs against the prior year to ensure that nothing gets dropped off the list inadvertently.
If I can just say something along those lines. We have implemented a procedure to address this, and it follows along the lines of what KPMG said. We have set up a procedure whereby the colleges complete the program participation agreement. That is now being sent into the Office of Academic Affairs here at Central Office. It is being reviewed by the Office of Academic Affairs before it is submitted to the Department of Education, and we think that this will prevent the kind of situation that we had previously. The other thing I would also note is that all of these programs did qualify for TAP, for the State Financial Award, and this was really a, it was an administrative oversight on the part of the colleges, and it's a problem that we discovered, which actually came about because of the new legis, the new ruling that the Department of Education had on gainful employment, which forced institutions to look at their, and especially degree-granting institutions, to look at their certificate programs. And so that CUNY and a whole lot of other schools were caught in this situation, and so we think that there will not be a penalty to the university, and we expect to hear from the Department of Ed soon.
Barry, is this just the issue where, as I recall, I thought we talked about this once before, where things were inadvertently dropped by the Department of Education, programs were inadvertently dropped and didn't show up on the list?
These were inadvertently dropped by a college, not by the Department of Education. I wish I could say it was the college.
Okay. The next item relates to investments and the timeliness of recording journal entries. Management has a process in place to record the investment activity on a quarterly basis. This year, we noted that the first two quarters were recorded with the third quarter, so there were no entries posted for the first two quarters. And then the fourth quarter was posted timely. So we're just recommending that it actually does happen on a quarterly basis to be able to record the activity into the general ledger. And lastly, census data, and I know we had spoken about this in November as well, but when we are auditing the census data for the post-retirement plan, we did have some differences noted in the census data between what is used by the actuary, book consultants, in determining the liability and what the supporting documentation had noted when we received it from the individual colleges. Nothing on an individual basis was considered material, but there were a handful of items that did not agree back. So we are recommending that management start a process where the individual schools go back and, I mean, over, you know, time, double-check all of the information that the actuary has, because that is the basis for determining their liability. Any questions on anything related to the management letter before I go on to the A-133? Turning to slide five, the A-133 audit overview. I mean, as I had mentioned, we are complete with the A-133 audit. It's with you in draft form, but essentially, the plan is that we would be issuing later this week. Just wanted the committee to be able to review it in draft. It is provided to you in its full form, which is 76 pages. The first, the last 14 pages are the new information. So everything prior to that, the MDNA, the financial statements, the notes, were already issued by us in November. Those, that's the basic financial statements. But when the schedule of federal awards and the other opinions are required to be issued for the A-133 report, the financial statements are required as well. So it does turn out to be a fairly thick document. The audit is conducted in accordance with auditing standards that are generally accepted in the United States, and the standards applicable to financial audits that are contained in government auditing standards. So our first two opinions relate to generally accepted auditing standards, and then the second opinion is on government auditing standards. There is a third opinion in the package that relates to the major programs, the programs that we're auditing, and that is done in accordance with the OMB circular A-133 that is issued by the federal government. So the federal government issues a compliance supplement that provides auditors with the information they need to audit the major programs. In terms of the A-133, we do visit all of the schools. So unlike the financial statement audit, we do go to all 19 of the colleges. We are making a sample of students from all the schools to be able to do our audit work. There were two major programs that we audited this year, the Student Financial Assistance Cluster and the State Fiscal Stabilization Fund Cluster. And we, you know, auditors do not audit every program that is included on the schedule of federal awards. There is a formula that is prescribed that we follow, which is essentially 3% of your total federal awards, but there is a requirement to back out programs that have loans, and student financial aid obviously has loans in it, so we do back that out to determine the calculation. So anything over $2.5 million is considered a type A program that we need to assess risk and determine whether or not we should be auditing it. The Student Financial Assistance Cluster is determined to be high-risk, really because of the magnitude of the dollars that are included in there and the level of compliance requirements. There are a lot of compliance requirements as it relates to SFA. The SF, SF Cluster is required to be audited because it was RRA funds, and the federal regulation said that if you have a program that has more than 20% of RRA money in it, it needs to be audited if it's over the threshold, and in this case, it was. So we were required to audit it. So those are the two programs that we audited. And again, as I had mentioned, we do follow the guidance in the compliance supplement, which is issued by the federal government to determine our audit procedures. And we do go through a process of determining which ones are applicable, which ones are then directed material, and then we go through a series of procedures to look at the compliance aspects, as well as the internal control over the compliance requirements. And I'm going to have Erin go through the next two pages, speak a little bit about the procedures that we cover for the major programs.
So if you turn to page six, I'll go over the requirements for the Student Financial Assistance Cluster. And as Shelley mentioned, there's several compliance requirements since it is such a significant program. For the most part, we test the compliance and the control procedures as a dual-purpose test. So a lot of these, I'm going to note some high-level controls that we audit, which is also part of the compliance test work that we do. So the first item is allowable activities. This is where we ensure that the students that are receiving aid are actually eligible to receive aid. So we look at, we review the handbook to make sure that the people at the schools are aware of the eligibility requirements, but we also review the ICER, which is the students, it's the information from the student system that gives you all of the eligibility for the students. So we look at supporting documentation such as income tax returns, their parents' returns, to ensure that the information that this student is providing is accurate and that they are eligible to receive aid. We also look at cash management, which is really how the college receives funding from the Department of Education, so their request for reimbursement, as well as the receipt of the funds to make sure that it's appropriately recorded at both the bank and the general ledger. Eligibility is a big requirement. It kind of goes hand-in-hand with allowable activities. We look at several requirements within this compliance requirement, making sure that the student is eligible. There's a list of probably 30 to 40 items that we have to look at to determine whether a student is eligible, and we review this information. Management reviews this, and we review management's review to make sure that it's accurate. We also look at the calculation of funding for the student, as well as the cost of attendance, and make sure that the information that the student has, that the college has put together for the student's cost of attendance is accurate. Period of availability is just making sure that the money that is received by the college is expended within the period. So for student financial aid, it's not a very hard requirement to test, because the money is received on a year-by-year basis, but we do look to make sure that the awards are for the year that is, that we're auditing. Reporting, we review reports submitted by the university for accuracy and timeliness. As it relates to student financial aid, there's different types of reporting. There's a FISAP report that has to be done. We also review Perkins reporting, that's a particular award, as well as Pell reporting. So there's different reporting requirements that we audit. There's several special tests and provisions over the student financial aid cluster. There are separate funds, that's where we review. They're required, the school is required to make sure that they have separate accountability for the federal aid, so we make sure that they have separate general ledger accounts for each of the different types of aid. We look at verification. We review procedures performed and documents obtained from the students. The government requires that a certain number of students, their information be verified to make sure that it's accurate, so we review that information. Disbursements to and on behalf of students. Here, we have to review the calculation of the dispersment to the students, as well as the timeliness of the reporting. There's a certain amount of period of time where the dispersments have to be made and the school has to disperse the funds, and we review that to make sure that it's accurate and timely. Return to Title IV funds. When a student is awarded a refund, or gets a refund, we have to make sure that that calculation is properly done, depending on how much time the student actually attended classes. If they attend for less than 50% or more than 50%, that affects the amount of the return that goes back to the student or to the government. And there's also timeliness reporting, they have to do it within a certain amount of days. Enrollment reporting. Anytime there's a student status change, whether that be a drop, the student withdraws, graduate, we need to make sure that that's properly reported if the student has direct loans. So we look at that requirement. Loan repayments. We have to perform procedures over repayments, deferments, cancellations, and we look at various controls to make sure that, you know, these repayments, deferments, cancellations are approved by the school, they're signed off on, so we make sure that those are accurate. If there's any federal work-study agreements at the schools, we make sure that the agreement, there's agreements in place that they're signed by the student and the school. We also look at timesheets to make sure that the students are paid for the hours that they work, and that they're paid in accordance with the amount in their contract. The last compliance requirement that we look at is bar data transmission and reconciliation. This is where we perform reconciliation procedures to make sure that the information is being transmitted timely. On the next slide, these are the compliance requirements over the State Fiscal Stabilization Fund Cluster. There's not too many compliance requirements that have to be tested here, but we do test allowable activities and costs. There's two pieces to this award. There's the piece of the award that's used for adjunct salaries, so we look at a certain number of adjunct employees and make sure that their salaries are approved, that their timesheets are approved, and that what they're being paid is in accordance with their personal action form. The other piece of this is the awards and payments to students for the TAP program. So in conjunction with the Student Financial Aid Cluster, we make sure that the student need is reviewed by the Student Financial Aid Office and that they're, you know, the students are eligible to receive this award. And that kind of goes hand-in-hand with the eligibility of students. And again, we look at their verification policy that I just spoke about on the previous page, as well as the cost of attendance for these students. There's only two special tests for this program. One is separate accountability for RRA funding. As Shelley mentioned, if you're receiving RRA funds, it's high-risk, so they ask that there be a separate account for any RRA funding, so we make sure that that is set up in the general ledger system. And there's also a separate presentation on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, and as you'll see in the report, it specifically says if it's RRA funding, it has to be identified that it has RRA money within the program.
Okay, so we test all of that, a lot that we look at, and as a result, we had three areas where exceptions were identified. The first relates to student status confirmation reports. That's the enrollment reporting special test that Erin had talked about, and we had identified two of our sample of 76 students where their change in status was not timely remitted through to the appropriate databases. No question costs related to this finding, but it was considered to be an internal control exception and a compliance finding. And this was a repeat finding from the prior year as well. The second finding was not repeated, it was a new finding this year. We have seen it in the past, but not last year, and one out of 51 students sampled was over-dispersed their federal work-study. So as we were going through the process of looking at their timesheets, somebody was overpaid. The question costs was only $180, but there is a requirement that when that $180 gets extrapolated over the whole population, if you have a potential question cost of greater than $10,000, it's required to be reported as a finding. So that's how it got, it needed to be reported. Essentially, the extrapolated costs were going to be more than $10,000.
Required to be reported to the audit committee?
No, required to be reported in the report.
Yeah, in the A-133 report.
Yeah. There's seven reasons why you would have to put something as a finding in the report, and that's one of the seven.
Can we expect a follow-up request for a check?
Uh, no, probably not. Not unless you got audited.
The college has already made good on that.
The last finding relates to what I had mentioned previously with respect to the management letter, and that's the certificate programs. So as of today, since the programs have not yet been approved for fiscal 2011, we do have question costs of $1.4 million for those five colleges that had provided the student financial assistance to the program, to the students who were in ineligible programs. And that is considered to be a compliance and an internal control finding as well. Any questions on A-133 report? I mean, one thing that I should note, I mean, I know I've mentioned this in the past, but you, the CUNY's A-133 does not include any of the RF money, so they do get a separate audit that is actually included in the notes.
I'd like the committee to know that in the years since I've been the controller for the university, this is the best A-133 audit report that the university has had. There are basically three findings. The last one on the institutional eligibility is a potential liability of $1.4 million. We do not think that the government will come after us for that money, because I think that they, at least the early signs we've had is that this is really an administrative oversight that a number of institutions are facing. And in fact, before this is, this draft is finalized, if we can receive some word from the Department of Ed, we've requested a letter from them, this may in fact then disappear, at least that liability may disappear. What I think is most notable, that I'd like the committee to be aware of, is that there are no R2-T4 findings that have found its way into the report. Notable in that several years ago, we were having some serious problems with this, with this issue. We made an attempt to address it, we made a commitment to address it through Executive Vice Chancellor Dobrin's office, and I will say that through the hard work of staff in the controller's office, in the Office of Internal Audit, and in the Office of Enrollment Management, meeting with the colleges on a monthly basis, asking the colleges and actually directing them to appoint a R2-T4 coordinator, I think that we have this under control. Can I tell you that we'll never have any R2-T findings in A-133? No, I don't think we're going to have perfection, but I think we turned the corner in this regard. And I think it's important to note that we've come a very long way from several, several years ago when the university had faced some serious problems. I will say, with, a controller will not say, that he's really been the hero and the leader on this. I mean, many of us have worked on it from time to time, but he's really stayed the course. This university owes him a debt of gratitude. Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
And it's no easy task.
No, it's.
I mean, you have to get down to individual professors at individual classes taking records. We don't call it, we call it R2-D2 at Baruch, just in a sense of humor, but. We don't call it, we call it R2-D2, it's Baruch, just sense of humor, but it was a major effort and a successful effort.
Well, I'd just say that, I'll wrap that part up by simply concurring with everybody that this is incredibly complex. And the fact that it's this complex and we're, and we have this few difficulty and problem is, I think lots of people in this administration can take credit for it. And mostly, Barry, obviously, you're principally involved, and you make this job much easier when we're not dealing with a lot of exceptions and a lot of problems in the, in the audit letter. Is that the report?
Okay.
No, is.
There was only one other thing left on the agenda, but I can be quick with it.
Well, the only thing left on the agenda, I'd like to make a suggestion. Let's make that a take-home test.
Okay.
And we'll have the people, everybody, the committee, your assignment is to read the ten things you should know about being on an audit committee. I appreciate you sending us those. The KPMG people have been great about sending us information on audit committees and the rest. I'm just concerned about the time of people here today.
Could we just have a motion to approve the A-133 so we can then just finalize it and send it off?
That doesn't have to be done by the committee?
I think the committee can just approve it. We can just have a motion.
Okay. Do you move?
Hold it.
Second. Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I want to put an issue on the table. With regard to communications on internal control, I want to, Exhibit A, Page Eight, the question about access to our systems. I think we need to, this is a, this is a status of prior year comments 2010. Again, if you want to look at Exhibit A, Page Eight, we discussed this briefly. I just want to make sure that we're aware of it. Again, very complex place with many, many, many operating parts. But I am concerned that, that both in 2010 and 2011, four terminated individuals with access to our financial accounting systems had that access maintained for a period of time, not a long period of time, but for a period of time after they were terminated. GASB doesn't require an opinion on internal controls, but at a FASB level, this would be, this would be a day. And if there's anything we can do to try to fix that problem, I think we ought to, and this is not a controller's problem, but if this is a problem, it's got to be fixed.
And I understand, Barry, you had some ideas on internally, to follow up on this. If you just briefly tell us about this.
Yeah, I will, I will have a conversation with the Central Office HR group about, once again, sending notification out to the various departments in the Central Office, and also have a conversation with Vice Chancellor Waters about bringing this up as an agenda item when she meets with the HR directors at the campuses. I think that, and we'll just keep monitoring it from there. It is a, it is an issue having to do really with notifications and, and proper notifications.
And I want to stress, while it is a item of concern, am I correct that there has been no evidence of any breach, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Any other business?
Should we approve the minutes?
Yes, we do.
No other business, move to adjourn. Thank you.